Well, welcome everybody tonight to Holy Fire Ministry Training School. We are really blessed to have Matt Prater with us. You know it's been about two years since you've been teaching at the Bible School? And it seems like it's gone by like this. Matt has been a regular teacher, he's a great friend. He'll tell you more of his testimony, but he's on the radio, Vision FM. He also pastors a church, New Hope Brisbane Church, that's by the Normanby Hotel. He'll tell you a little bit more about that. He does History Makers, TV, I think TV and radio show. So, and the Soup Kitchen. Which I'm really happy to hear that a couple, a few of you students are helping to minister to the poor and the homeless. And I want to encourage you, that's a great ministry opportunity. If you don't think there's ministry opportunities, we have tons, absolutely, there's so much going on.
And you get more out of it than putting it in our...
Yep, you get more out of it than what you put in, amen. So without any further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Matt.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me back Pastor Glenn. And thank you everyone joining us on the live streaming. It is wonderful to be here. I just love how many hugs I get every time I come here. This is like the hugging Bible School. I love it. It should be the first church of the Holy Fire and the hugs or something, I don't know. But it's just so good to be back here. And yeah, thank you to the girls that have been volunteering at the Soup Kitchen on Fridays. They've been coming the last few weeks. And anyone that wants to come, turn up anytime between 10:00 and 1:00 on a Friday. We had Peter come the other day, didn't he? She had his testimony. Phew, it's great, it's awesome. You can share, sister, come up, yeah. I think you need the microphone for the live streaming. Go for it.
Hello everyone. Every time we go, we're like, bros. So Soup Kitchen, so we've been going a few weeks and man, this place like honestly changes you. So you go in as a volunteer, but you come out like, like changed, like that place just wrecks you and oh my gosh, I'm gonna cry thinking about it, but you know, for us Christians, there's so many things that we do, like you know, services to equip us, right? But this place, you know, you're actually doing practical like stuff, you're actually, it pushes you to be bold about your faith, you know, it's so easy for us to be Christians among Christians. But when you go to a place where they need love, it just, you're just, you're so changed and you come, you leave that place just deeply in love. So I just encourage you guys, if you're not doing something that's not about you and you get down, you know, just do it man, like Soup Kitchen or somewhere, feed someone.
Yeah, amen, that's good, awesome, come on. That's good, that's good. Yeah, I'm a Soup Kitchen junkie, seriously guys, I've been doing it for three years now. And it is my favorite day of the week, like Sundays is okay. I love our Fridays, it's wonderful. And you know, for those who don't know the story, we started three years ago and we put on a big meal, we put on signs everywhere and no one turned up and we're like, what do we do? And we remember the Lord spoke to us about the parable of the king's banquet. You know where they put on a banquet, no one turned up? So they went out to the highways and the byways and they invited people and still, they didn't come. So they went out a third time and they compelled them to come. And it says that the sick, the lame, the poor, all came. And that's who Jesus wants us to reach out to guys. That is so much closer to the center of the Lord's heart. And you know, these guys, we pick them up from Avondale Hostel and Pindari and Brick Housing and Hurston Lodge, these different hostels around the city. And they are just broken, you know, they're just addicted to things, they're domestic violence or PTSD or you know, they're just made a couple of bad choices in life and ended up on the streets, you know. So we get them from the shelters, but people come from the streets as well. So it's just heartbreaking when you see what these guys have been through. And you know what, it's great that there's lots of street vans that go out and feed, but often they just get a full tummy and they just go back, you know. What we do is we bring them into the church to build community. Cause everyone's made to be in community, amen. In the Psalms it says, "He sets the lonely in families." And that's one of the purposes we have, to build a community together, you know. And I actually just did a wedding three weeks ago for a guy and a girl who met at our Soup Kitchen. It was awesome. Let me tell you. Let me tell you, it was, it was Easter Saturday and it was one of the wildest weddings I've ever done. You heard, you heard the phrase bridezilla? No, it was, it was a crazy wedding. And then I got invited to this pub at Fortitude Valley for the afternoon for the reception. And I was like, oh, gotta preach tomorrow, Easter Sunday, oh, should I do it, you know? And the Lord said, you know, I'd be at the party. The Lord reminded me, his first miracle was at a wedding, turning water into wine. He said, "I'd be there, mate, are you gonna go?" And I'm like, "Okay Lord." So I went down to this pub at the valley and like I saw one guy had four schooners within 10 minutes. And I'm like, okay, I'm not gonna witness to him, cause that ain't going anywhere. And but there was about 20 or 30 people there and all connected to this, these homeless shelters and from the Soup Kitchen kinda connected and we all knew who I was, cause I did the wedding and you know, so it's like they all lined up to talk to me. Like you know, you know, like you get people, one lady said, "Excuse me father, can I ask you a question?" Another girl wanted to confess her sins to me. Like the priest, you know. I didn't have the white collar, no. But it was like God put me there in the middle of that pub. And it was just the wildest afternoon, believe me. But I had people, like one lady, you know, she shared with me that her partner had committed suicide recently and she was depressed and she'd attempted, you know, suicide and she was just broken. And she was just weeping before me. And she said, "Does God really love me? Is God there?", you know? And I just prayed for her right in the middle of the pub there and she just felt the Holy Spirit come on her and real healing, you know? You know, for me, you know, I've spent 11 years as a senior pastor now. I've spent many years babysitting Christians. And helping Christians with their struggles, you know, and that's part of my job and I agree that, you know. But the Lord told me that his job is to seek and save the lost. And we've got a harvest field. Jesus said, "Lift up your eyes, the fields are wide under harvest, we've gotta go. We've gotta go and seek and save the lost, we've gotta compel them to come." They're on our doorstep everywhere. I'm sure you guys all know people that are addicts, I'm sure you all know someone that's been on the streets. I'm sure you know, you know, someone that's, you know, been a victim of domestic violence or someone that's been down and out. That's your mission field, friends. Jesus said, "Go into all the world and preach the gospel to all creation." He says, "When the Holy Spirit comes on you, be my witnesses in Judea, Samaria, Jerusalem, Judea, Samaria, and to the uttermost parts of the earth." And I believe that, you know, in our cosmos, in our region, in our direct environment is the first place we're meant to witness, in our friends and family, in our neighborhoods, in our city, in our region, in our state, and to the, to the ends of the earth. We're all called to go and, and do missions. C.H. Spurgeon said, "Christians are either missionaries or imposters." That's a burn, isn't it? If you're not a missionary, you're an imposter. I better get to my notes in a minute, cause I'm getting carried away here. But I just, I just wanna challenge you, every one of us has a mission field. Every one of us is called to go into all the world and preach the gospel. J. John, one of my favorite preachers from the UK, little Greek guy that looks like Mr. Bean. He says, "Missionaries aren't people who cross the sea, missionaries are people that see the cross." When you see the cross and you realize what Christ went through for us, you'll preach the cross. The gospel is Christ and Him crucified. We've gotta tell people the good news of Jesus in our harvest field. So tonight, my message is called "Overcoming Negativity." Anybody feel like we're just surrounded by negativity wherever we go? Oh man, you turn on the TV and they're picking on politicians and they're whinging about the budget and they're complaining about the environment and they're complaining about prices and money and you know, there's just negativity. You go to the, you know, the highways, you know, the roads around the place. People are honking their horn, they're rude, they're, you know, there's negativity everywhere, you know. You, you know, go to your workplace, people are complaining about this, complaining about that, there's negativity. And you know, how many of you know it can drag you down? Even in church, that's right, there's negativity, there's whinging, there's friendly fire in the church, complaining and grumbling, you know? Wherever we turn, there's, there's negativity. In life, there are so many things that drag us down and become a burden that's too heavy to hurry. That's too heavy to carry. Put my teeth back in. But how many of you know that through prayer and worship, we can overcome negativity and have a tenacious faith? We can rise above our circumstances when we focus on the good things that the Lord is doing in our lives. I was talking to a friend the other day, I said, "How you going? Oh, not so good under the circumstances." And I said, "What are you doing under the circumstances then? Rise up above those circumstances." You know, we, we have all these circumstances around us that drag us down. If we look at the circumstances, we will be negative and we'll be dragged down. Let's rise up above them. And I believe that there are two wings that help us soar above our circumstances. The word of God and worship, amen? When we have the word of God, we can rise up. And when we have worship, we can rise up above our circumstances. Dietrich Bonhoeffer says this, "The more deeply we grow into the Psalms and more often we pray them as our own, the more simple and rich our prayer will become." I'll say that again, "The more deeply we grow into the Psalms and the more often we pray them as our own, the more simple and rich our prayer will become." Today, we're gonna have a look at how David sought the Lord in the Psalms and laid his burdens before the Lord. Just a quick question, I always love asking this, I'm always curious to know. What are your favorite Psalms? Who's got a favorite Psalm? 23, good one. My son, 11 years old, has memorized Psalm 23. He got up and quoted it in front of the church on Sunday, I'm like, "That's my boy, yeah." It's a preacher's kid, yeah. Pine-sized preachers, I actually watched a documentary called Pine-sized Preachers the other day, about these little kids, four-year-old kids preaching the gospel. How many believe we need a generation of children preaching the gospel, amen? Psalm 23, any other favorite Psalms? 91, yep, hey! That was like, that was like Vision Radio, that was in stereo. Psalm 91, a great Psalm about protection. His angel's looking after us. Psalm 139, oh, it's good, you're greedy, you've got two, okay. Any other favorite Psalms? 19? Oh, 119, beautiful. Is that the longest one? Yeah, that's, you know, in Psalm 119, there is every human emotion.
Yep, that's me.
Throughout the whole Psalm.
That's me every hour.
But you know, one of the good things about the Psalms, and I'm gonna look at it tonight, is that David was going through tough times. He had negativity all around him, he had attacks around him. And he acknowledged that to the Lord. And here's a challenge I wanna throw out to you. When you're under attack, talk to the Lord about it more than other people. How much do we whinge to other people about the stuff that's going on in our life? Just talk to the Lord about it, he can take it. He's God. He created us, he knit us together in our inmost being. He knows everything about us, he knows the hairs in our head, which for some of us isn't that much, you know? He knows our thoughts before we think them. He knows everything about us, he can take it. That's one of the beautiful things about the Psalms. See, one of the biggest lies that we receive is when we come to Christ, we think everything's gonna be perfect and rosy. When you come to Christ, you sign up for a battle. You are under attack straight away, the moment you come to know Jesus. And if you have an expectation that everything's gonna be rosy, it's gonna be smashed, it's gonna be shattered. You've still gotta have a faith to overcome. You've gotta believe that you'll make it through. But you've gotta expect the trials will come. And you look all through the Psalms, David is acknowledging, "My foes are against me, my enemies are against me, I'm under attack." He's crying out, saying, "God, where are you? God, how could this hap-" you know, he's, he's being real with God. And I would, I would just challenge you to make sure that if you do complain and whinge and grumble, do it to the Lord. Because it drags people down.
Yes, it does.
We need to create a culture in the church of speaking life and positivity among each other, amen? I've got a friend who's, I interviewed for History Makers the other day named Josie Chaco. He's an Indian guy, lives in Melbourne. And he's got 20,000 churches in India. He's visionist for 100,000 churches. Amazing man of God. And he says he's thinking of moving to Queensland, cause he wants to grow mangoes. He said, "In Melbourne, for 20 years, he's been trying to grow mangoes. But it's the wrong environment. Because it's too cold and not enough sun and you know." And he said, "I wanna move to Queensland, cause it's the right environment to grow mangoes." And he loves mangoes, you know? And he said, "Shouldn't the church be a place where we can grow good fruit? Shouldn't the church be a place of speaking life and encouragement and nurturing and growing? That's the atmosphere we need in the church. Speaking life, encouragement. What does the Bible say, "Spur one another on towards love and good deeds"? Encourage one another daily, gather together daily, even more as you see the day of the Lord coming, you know? Every day, let's speak life, encouragement to one another, let's create that culture." Just another quick question, who still memorizes Bible verses here? Yeah? Such an important thing to do, I did it as a kid, I learnt a lot of Bible verses as a kid. And it comes out of my preaching, it comes out of my conversation and what I do on the radio, you know?
Ask him if they know Matthew 6:33.
Matthew 6:33, who knows that? Yeah? Seek first the kingdom of God and His righteousness and all these things about it unto you? That's good. Good, yeah. I'm glad I knew that when I was in trouble. And who reads the word of God every day? All the research shows, if you read the word of God, more often than not in a week. So if you read the, statistically, if you read the word of God more than three or four times a week, you'll grow in your faith. If you read it less than three or four times, you won't grow in your faith. That's just, that's just research that proves that. So every day, feed yourself on God's word, I've spoken that here before, encourage you to. And, and tonight, I really want to, if, if there's anything you take home tonight, my challenge to you is to get into the Psalms. Find Psalm 119, 139, 91, 23. Find Psalm 150 about praise the Lord. Read Psalm 1 about not walking in the count of the week. Learn the Psalms and learn to pray the Psalms. If you're stagnant in your prayer life, pick up a Psalm and just start praying a Psalm. Most of the songs we sing at church are based on the Psalms. David was a man after God's own heart. And when he wrote those Psalms, it was a record for us to challenge us to get real with God. Cause this is the thing I love about the Psalms, is they're real. They're not just all, "Oh, I'm okay, Jesus is my Savior and everything's fine, I haven't got a problem in my life." They're like, "Oh, woe is me, God, why have you forsaken me?" Or you know, there's, there's real stuff. And how many, how many of you know we need a real relationship with God? We've gotta be real with God. Don't just fake it, don't just put on a show in front of, in front of people for God. What matters is you and the secret place with God. If you're stagnant and dry in your prayer life, get into the Psalms. In the course of the 150 Psalms, they run through the whole gamut of moods and emotions, from the heights of exultation to the depths of desolation. The Psalms allow us to acknowledge our feelings fully without getting stuck in them. They point us to praise and worship God. Many Psalms acknowledge problems and the negativity in our lives, but then they redirect us towards the Lord. Instead of focusing on the problem, we focus on the answer when we read the Psalms. We focus on our great God who saves, heals and delivers. You know, I met a guy the other day who was the most happy person I've ever met in my life. Joyful, happy, no, not a worry in the world. And I said, "What's your secret?" And he said, "Oh, I've found someone to worry for me." I said, "What?" And he said, "Yeah, yeah, I put an ad in the paper. Wanted someone to worry for me." And this guy answered the ad. And I said, "Wow, so you get someone to worry for you?" And he goes, "Yeah, yeah, yeah." I said, "How do you do that?" And he said, "Oh, I pay him every day." I said, "Really? I said, "How much do you pay this guy to worry for you?" He said, "I pay him $1,000 a day." I said, "How do you afford that?" And he said, "Oh, that's for him to worry about." I heard that on Pastor Greg Laurie on Vision Radio the other day. And I nearly pulled over on the road, I was laughing so hard, it was such a good joke.
So you, Matt.
But I just thought, there's a great principle in that, isn't there? When we worship the Lord, what does the Bible say? "Cast your worries unto him, because he cares for you." Cast all your anxieties, all your burdens unto him, because he cares for you. 1 Peter 5:7 is that verse. "Cast all your anxieties unto him, because he cares for you." You know, I just truly believe that. With all the negativity and the worry around us, when we pray the Psalms, when we worship the Lord, when we draw near to Him, we're laying our burden at the cross. It's like in Pilgrim's Progress, I've been reading that book to my, my kids recently. Pilgrimage, Christian, Christian the guy has this big burden and then eventually, he gets to the cross and he lays it at the cross and then he's free from his burden. That's what happens when we worship God, we lay everything at the cross and we don't pick it up again. We lay it there and we leave it there. And we trust in the Lord. One of my favorite new preachers I've been watching is a guy named Stephen Furtick. Who's from Elevation Church, man, that guy can preach. He's younger than us, he's this young guy, like in his 30s or something, he's incredible. And he preached the other day, a message called "The Haunted Heart." And he talked about how in our heart, we have things like guilt, hopelessness, offence, sorrow and threats of the wicked. And I thought, this is interesting, and he got, he got these five guys to stand behind him as he preached. And actually, right, right down the name of the sermon, "Haunted Heart" by Stephen Furtick. It's worth Googling and watching the clip. He had these five guys with masks behind him. And he, and he said, "There's guilt, hopelessness, offence, sorrow and threats of the wicked." And I thought, that's interesting. And he said, "G-H-O-S-T, that spells ghost." And he says, "Each of us have in our heart remnants of guilt, remnants of hopelessness, remnants of offence, remnants of sorrow and threats of the wicked. And we carry it around with us." And he said, "But what we've gotta do is we've gotta expect and expose those attacks when they come our way." And he said, "Fear only works with the element of surprise." And he, he talked about it, he said that when he was in youth group, when he was a young fella, he, he was actually raising money for their youth choir. And he said, "Work this out theologically, I can't." He said, "But they set up a haunted house to fundraise for their youth choir." So they all dressed up in their scary gear, you know, with chainsaws and, you know, axes, you know? Only in America, hey, anyway. Love you brother, you're a good man, love you brother. I mightn't be invited back, I better be quick. So he said, "In this haunted house, his job was to hide behind one of the cupboards and scare people when they come past." And, and then, you know, people would pay money to go into the haunted house and you know, he said it was pretty silly. He said, "But imagine if I-" he stood at the front door and said to everyone, "Oh, I'm just gonna be in that cupboard over there with a big chainsaw. When you come past, I'm gonna jump out and scare you, just letting you know, okay?" He said, "That would take away the power of the, of the fear of that person, wouldn't it?" He said, "When you expect that you're gonna get scared and you expose it, it has no power over you." Oh my, that is so good. And he explained, he actually showed this video in his church. He said, "One of the favorite things he does as a dad is he scares his kids a lot." He said, "He actually said, 'There aren't many benefits for being a dad, but one of them is you get to scare your kids and you enjoy it.'" And, and he said that, he got out his phone to film his kids, they were getting out of the car with his wife, and he filmed it. And as soon as they came to the door, he opened up and went, "Woah!", you know? And his wife was on the other side. And she goes, "Ah!" And he played this on the big screen on his church, you know? And he said, "That was so good, let's just watch it again." And he played it again. He played it a third time, the whole church is laughing, you know? He said, "It only scared her because she wasn't expecting." "If she knew I was on the other side, she would have been ready with a baseball bat and she would have dumped me as soon as I opened the door, you know?" And he says, "You've gotta expect and expose when attacks come your way." Expect that the enemy's gonna try and attack you. Expect that he's gonna try and bring guilt or hopelessness or offence or sorrow or threats of the wicked. And then he, in this message, he just went on, it was brilliant. He, he took off the masks, these, these guys all had scary masks on, you know? He took off the mask of guilt, he took off the mask of hopelessness, offence, sorrow and threats of the wicked. He took off the G-H-O-S-T. And he said, "These guys looked scary with their masks on, didn't they?" He said, "But when you expose them to the light, they're not scary anymore, are they?" "When you shine the light, the darkness leaves." "When you show that it's just a fake, it's just a-" you know? Cause this is the thing, the devil roars around like a lion, ready to devour anyone in his path. But his roar is louder than his bite. He's toothless. The devil will try and scare you into thinking he's got all this power over you, but greater is he that's in me than he that's in the world. "It's not by might or by power, but by my spirit," says the Lord, amen? When we get a revelation that God's spirit is in us and we have power over all these ghosts that are attacking us, we expect it, we expose it. And the fear won't work, because there's no element of surprise anymore. So I just wanna challenge you, in your walk with God, as you get into the secret place, as you worship, as you get into the Psalms, let the light shine on all the ghosts that are attacking you. Let the light shine on the demons that are attacking you. One of the gifts of the spirit is the discerning of spirits, isn't it? We can discern those attacks that come our way. Expect it and expose it.
Can you go through the acronym again?
G-H-O-S-T is guilt, hopelessness, offence, sorrow and threats of the wicked. Guilt, hopelessness, offence, sorrow and threats of the wicked. He says, "When you take off the mask and you let the light shine on it, you might still have fear, but fear won't have you." Big difference, isn't there? Cause we've just gotta realize that we'll have fear in, in this world. We'll be fearful, things will happen and we'll be fearful, but we won't let it have us. Did you have a question, brother? Stephen Furtick, F-U-R-T-I-C-K. He's a good preacher, my wife always says, "Why can't you preach like Stephen Furtick, huh?" I'm working on it, honey, I'm working on it. You know that 95% of our fears don't ever come to pass? It's true. We have all these fears and we, we make a mountain out of a molehill, don't we? Look at the way David looked at Goliath. He could have looked at him and said, "He's so big, he's gonna kill me." Or he could have said, "He's so big, how can I miss him?" We've gotta realize that God plus one is a majority, amen? No matter how big your giant is, no matter how big the army is against you, if God's on your side, you win. Look at Gideon, he just had 300 in his army. The Lord used them and they won the battle. Doesn't matter how big and scary it is, when God is in you. Greater is he that's in me than he that's in the world. So we're gonna have a little bit of a change of pace now, I'm gonna put my teaching hat on, we're gonna have a look at the Psalms. And did a bit of research on this, I really enjoyed researching this. So there's a biblical scholar named Herman Gunkel, who says that there are different types of Psalms. Out of the 150 books of Psalms, they've been categorized into various types. So the first bunch of the Psalms is the hymns. Many of the Psalms simply have songs of praise, like Psalm 8, "Lord, O Lord, how majestic is your name in all the earth." Many of the Psalms are just hymns, worship to God. The next bunch of Psalms, and it's good to notice, is the lament or the complaint Psalms. I'm giving you, I'm giving you permission here to complain to God, I am. Cause I truly believe, a believer that can't complain to God is not honest, that's right, they're not the real deal. You've gotta be real before God. You've got to be real before God. Imagine if my wife and I only ever talked about the good things in our marriage and our kids, you know? It'd be pretty fake, wouldn't it? We've got to talk about the bills that we have to pay, we've got to talk about the problems our kids are having, we've got to talk about the problems in our church, oh, that's a long conversation, you know? We've got to talk about the struggles that we might be having in our health or whatever, you know? You've got to talk about that stuff. Otherwise, it's a fake relationship, you know? In the lament or the complaint Psalms, there are ones like Psalm 3, where he starts out, "Lord, how many are my foes? How many rise up against me?" Some complaint Psalms do sound quite negative, though they are set within a context of God responding in love or power. Psalm 44, verse 23 to 24, says, "Awake, Lord, why do you sleep? Rouse yourself, don't reject us forever. Why do you hide your face and forget our misery and oppression?" That's a lovely song, why don't we sing that one in church? But I'm just saying, it's real, it's real relationship. When you're going through a tough time, go to the Lord about it. Write it down in your journal, you know, I talk about journaling every day, writing down in your journal before the Lord. These are just journals. Worship songs, he's written in his journals. David was remembered as a man after God's own heart. In my daily readings, I just read the other day of David and Bathsheba, how he saw her bathing and went and sought for her and he committed adultery. And then he went and, you know, sent her home and found out she was pregnant and then went after the husband, got him off the battlefield, tried to get him, you know, back with her, you know, the whole story? And then he ends up dying and, you know, on the battlefield, and so he's not only an adulterer, he's a murderer. And, you know, his life's messed up, you know? Yet he's remembered as a man after God's own heart. Because even though he messed up, he goes back to the Lord. And it's interesting because my daily readings that day had those passages from Samuel, and then it had Psalm 51, which was the psalm that he wrote while he was lamenting, he was going through that tough time. Saying, "Create me a clean heart, O Lord, take not your Holy Spirit from me." And if you know, whenever we mess up, we've got to go to the Lord. Go to the Lord, worship Him. Worship Him, there's healing in worship. And then there's the royal Psalms. Several Psalms were performed in the presence of kings or dignitaries. Psalm 1850 says, "He gives his kings great victories, he shows unfailing love to his anointed, to David and his descendants forever", so that was the specific purpose for the royals. Then there's the thanksgiving Psalms. You'll know some of these ones. Psalm 30, 32 and 34. Psalm 67, 124, there's a lot of them. One of the best known ones is Psalm 100. "Enter his gates with thanksgiving in your hearts, enter his courts with praise. Give thanks to him and praise his name, for the Lord is good and his love endures forever. His faithfulness endures through all generations." You know, if I want to go and visit Pastor Glenn's house, I've got to go through his gates and through his courts to get into his house, don't I? How do you get to be with the Lord? You enter his gates with thanksgiving. You enter his courts with praise. We've got to have a sense of thankfulness. It's great to have a complaint and a lament. It's okay, it's okay, but we've got to be thankful. Be grateful. I think in this iPhone, iPad, iPod generation, it's all about me, me, me. Listen to that radio station, WAIFM, "What's in it for me?" That's how we all live, we want, you know, things for ourselves and we can be tainted by the world and we can become ungrateful. One of the keys to healing and breakthrough and intimacy with the Lord is thankfulness. Be thankful for what the Lord's given you, be thankful for your health, be thankful for this school. Be thankful Pastor Glenn, what an amazing man of God, you know? Be thankful, be grateful for what the Lord's blessed you with. And then there's the wisdom Psalms. While many Psalms discuss aspects of wisdom, certain Psalms, such as Psalm 1, 37 and 49, focus on the theme of wisdom. Speaking of the fear of the Lord or offering words of wisdom, Psalm 1:1-3, this is a great memory verse, I think we should all memorise. "Blessed is the one who doesn't walk in the step of the wicked or stand in the way that sinners take or sit in the company of mockers, whose delight is in the law of the Lord and who meditates on his Lord day and night. That person's like a tree planted like streams of water, which yields its fruit in season and whose leaf does not wither; whatever they do prospers." How good is that? There's lots of wisdom we can gain as we get into the Psalms. And then there's a smaller genre and mixed type of Psalm. Some of them like 9, 10 and 123. Other Psalms have a small number in their category. And then there are some Psalms that are songs of assent, and I never realised this till I just researched this the other day. They were written to be sung by worshippers on the way up to Jerusalem. They also represent a small genre. And I remember going to Jerusalem myself. I went there about three years ago with 11 other pastors. Thankfully, none of them are called Judas. And it was like a joke, there was a Catholic, a Baptist and a rabbi. We walked into a bar together. It was actually a special tour with, there was one Catholic, two Anglican, three uniting, three Baptist and a few Pentecostals and one religious Jew and two secular Jews. So that was the make-up of the group pretty much, you know? And we just had a quick tour over 10 days, going to all the places where Jesus was born, like Nazareth and Bethlehem and Nazareth. We went to the Sea of Galilee. We went on the water and we worshipped the Lord. I tried to walk but it didn't work, but anyway, you know, walk in the water. We went to the River Jordan and we did some baptisms there. It was beautiful, beautiful. And then we went to the Via Della Rosa, where Jesus carried the cross down Jerusalem. But before we got to Jerusalem, we went on the hill up to the lookout overlooking, you know, where you can see the Dome of the Rock and the Church of the Holy Sepicure and you can see all of Israel. As we're going up the, that's all of Jerusalem, as we're going up the hill, Arvy, our Arab bus driver, put a CD on. And I can still remember, every one of us were just in tears as we drove up the mountain and as we came over the top and the song came on. Jerusalem, Jerusalem, hear how the angels sing, Hosanna in the highest. And as we went up the hill, that song was just like, you know, sung much better than that, by the way. But he cranked the seat up and we're like, "Oh, this is Jerusalem, this is it, this is the place." And we're all just in tears and we're all just like, "This is the place where Jesus was", you know? Anyone here been to Jerusalem? Wow. Let's do it, let's go. I believe that the Lord invites us to visit His Holy Land. And there's been more Christians visiting Jerusalem in the last 10 years than in the history of the world, you know? God is sending His people there to pray for Jerusalem, to bless Jerusalem, to pray for peace, you know? And I truly believe you should have a dream to go. Because my Bible comes alive now. It used to be black and white, now it's full colour. I know the Sea of Galilee, I've walked on there, I know Nazareth where he grew up, I know Bethlehem, I know I know the places, I've been to the Golgotha, the place of the skull, where there's a there's a cliff and there's two eyes and a mouth that you can actually see, and that's why it's called Golgotha, because it looks like there's a skull there. And Christ was crucified at the bottom of that cliff, I've been to the place. I've been to the empty tomb. Chuck Misler, well-known Christian preacher, believes that there's 18 evidences that prove that that is actually the garden tomb where Christ was buried. I've been to that place, I've seen it with my own eyes. And He's not there, He's risen. All the places, these miracles, I've seen the places, you know? So some of the Psalms were written as a song of ascent as they ascended up on their way to Jerusalem. So I've taught before here about journaling and the importance of reading the Word of God every day and doing the SOAP, Scripture Observation Application and Prayer. I want to just share with you one of my journals from last week. So if you want to write this down, it's Psalm 106, verse 43 to 47. So last week, as I was preparing, I was reading through Psalm 106. And whenever I read through a Psalm and I'm doing my journaling, I'm asking the Lord to give me a passage of scripture that slaps me in the face. And I get revelation. And if you know, we want the reema word of God. The inspired, revealed word of God, amen? Some call it reima, I call it reema. Doesn't matter what you call it, it's the revelation from the Word of God. We've got to realise this, that God's Word is living and active, amen? Hebrews 4:12, "The word of God is sharper than a two-edged sword, able to divide between soul and spirit, bone and marrow." The Word of God is alive and active. We need to realise when we read God's Word, we want to get revelation from it, amen? So this is the revelation, I got Psalm 106, 43 to 47, the whole Psalm was amazing, but this is the bit. He says, "Many times he delivered them, but they were bent on rebellion and wasted away in their sin. Yet he took note of their distress when he heard their cry. For their sake he remembered his covenant, and out of his great love he relented. He caused all who held them captive to show them mercy." And then David finishes the Psalm and says, "Save us, Lord, O God." This whole Psalm is a great snapshot of the Israelites in captivity in Egypt and in the wilderness. It's worth reading through this whole Psalm, so part of your homework is to read Psalm 106 completely. So make a note of that, that's homework for this week, I'll be checking up next week, I'll be asking Pastor Glenn. The whole Psalm goes through a history of the Israelites in captivity in Egypt and then in the wilderness. It's so important to acknowledge the past and learn lessons from previous generations so we can have a better future, amen? That's one of the reasons why God gave us His Word, to learn what mistakes they did wrong and how we can do it better in the future. David, in his generation, is remembering what Moses went through in his generation. And he's asking God to save his generation, who are in a similar state to the generation of Moses. In verse 6, he says, "We have sinned, even as our ancestors did. We have done wrong and acted wickedly." He goes on and says, "They gave no thought to the miracles in Egypt. They didn't remember his many kindnesses and they rebelled by the Red Sea. Then he saved them and they believed his promises and sang his praise." Then this pattern is repeated through the whole Psalm. They forget God, they grumble and they worship false gods. And then in verse 23, it says, "He would have destroyed them had not Moses, his chosen one, stood in the breach before him to keep his wrath from destroying them." Firstly, it's a good reminder that history repeats itself over and over again. God's people, even today, over many thousands of years, we follow this pattern. We rebel against God, we grumble, we worship false gods, we fall in sinful ways, we get corrupt, but then God raises up someone to stand in the breach. That person will intercede for the people. And then we see the three reeds, repentance, revival and reformation, amen? God used Moses and Joshua in their time to stand in the gap. David was used to lead the people in his time. And throughout the ages, there've been many other great leaders that God has raised up. This Psalm is a helpful guidance to teach us how to pray in our situation. In the same way that David was praying for the people he was leading, we should pray in our times. Ezekiel 22:30, write this down. Ezekiel 22:30 says, "I was looking for someone among them who would build up the wall and stand in the gap." I remember visiting the Call prayer gathering in the USA, God bless the USA, I love the USA. I remember visiting them, Lou Engel there, with 15,000 young people at a baseball stadium. And Lou Engel, he prayed like a Jewish rabbi and he stood in the gap and he interceded for America to stand, to shift and turn back to God. He prayed for an end to abortion. He prayed for an end to the attack against biblical marriage. He prayed for an end to sex slavery. Three big things, and he stood in the gap saying, "Lord, break them, break them, break these strongholds in our nation." And he was one that was standing in the gap for America. Just two weeks ago, Angus Buckin in South Africa, from the movie Faith Like Potatoes, stood in the gap with 2 million people in one prayer meeting in South Africa. He prayed for revival, an anti-pornography addiction, an anti-sexual promiscuity, for godly government, for souls to be saved. It was probably the world's largest ever prayer meeting. 2 million people in South Africa, just two weeks ago, this happened. I watched it live on Facebook, I watched it on God TV. It was so powerful what God was doing. God raised up Lou Engel in America, God raised up Angus Buckin in South Africa. I believe God is raising up a nameless, faceless generation who will stand in the gap for this generation. In the same way Moses and Joshua did, in the same way David did. God is raising up people today to stand in the gap. I was just speaking to my wife recently about this and in Australia, I've been watching what's been happening in the prayer movements in Australia. Pastor Glenn and I were at a prayer gathering with the Lord Mayor just last Thursday. Two or 300 people from all the denominations praying for our city. We had the Natural Day of Prayer and Fasting in Canberra two years ago with 1,000 people in the Great Hall of Parliament House. Last year, we decentralised it and saw 5,000 people, five times as many people praying and fasting across Australia. I don't believe it's the amount of people that matters. What matters is the genuineness of the heart of the prayers that the Lord listens to. I believe we need a fresh move of God across Australia. And God is raising up many people to stand in the gap. A nameless, faceless generation of believers who will pray and fast for this generation to turn back to God. The bride of Christ is seeing pockets of revival in Australia. But I believe we'll see an awakening that will wake up the whole church. We need to cry out like David did in this Psalm and say, "Save us, O Lord, our God." And my prayer at the end of my journal said this, "Lord, save us. In the same way you heard the cry of Moses and David, hear our cry, O Lord. Pour out your Holy Spirit in Australia in Jesus' name, amen?" So as I read through that Psalm, I watched the pattern of what the people of Israel were going through, rebellion, worshipping false gods, corruption, you know? Turning away from God and then God raised up someone. And God spoke and then they turned back to God. This seems to be the pattern that the people of God go through. And I really believe right now, if you look at the church in Australia, I believe we're in a place where the church, capital C church, across the board is fairly lukewarm in Australia. We're not seeing that many souls saved, we're not seeing that many churches planted. We're seeing worldliness creep into the church. We're seeing people with screen addictions all through the church, you know? We're seeing people, we're seeing the divorce rate is just about as bad in the church as it is in the world. We're seeing abortion, we're seeing, you know, lots of, you know, violence, we're seeing corruption in church leaders, we're seeing... The church is pretty unhealthy in Australia. So I believe we've gone to this extreme. But God's raising up people to stand in the gap and we're gonna see a revival, reformation, repentance, turning back to God. Who believes we're coming to that season? I believe, when I see pockets of revival, like, I mean, you guys are in revival, seriously, you guys are awesome. When I hear the worship, when I see you going out doing the stuff you're doing, when I see your love for the Word of God, when I see your passion for God, I believe this is a remnant of revival and it's gonna spread throughout this city, amen? I believe we'll see it through New Hope Church, I hope. I believe we'll see it through JC Soldiers, we'll see it through different ministries, all of... We'll see pockets of revival and there'll be little spot fires and then all of a sudden they'll all join together. And whether it's unity, the Lord commands a blessing, amen? I truly believe we are on the way. You know when there's a tsunami? The wave goes back? You know, the water goes back and sucks it all up and then, and then it comes. I reckon I just... It's about to come, amen? I truly believe we need to learn the way that David prayed. Remember the lessons of the past. Acknowledge the attacks and the problems. Go through what's happened in the past and then appropriate it today. Lord, in the same way you saved Moses, save us. In the same way you saved David, save us. I'm gonna have a look at this passage in Romans 8:38. It's a famous verse, 8:38 and 39. It says, "I'm convinced that nothing can ever separate us from God's love. Neither death nor life, nor angels nor demons, neither our fears for today nor our worries for tomorrow. Not even the powers of hell can separate us from God's love. No power in the sky above or in the earth below. Indeed, nothing in all creation will ever be able to separate us from the love of God that is revealed in Christ Jesus our Lord." We've got to realise that when we pray, when we worship, though there's negativity all around us, though there's attacks all around us, nothing can separate us from God's love. No angels or demons, no fears of today or worries about tomorrow. Not even the powers of hell can separate us from God's love. Ephesians 2:10 is another great verse, it says, sorry, it doesn't say this, "You are God's masterpiece created in Christ Jesus to do good works, which you dreamed up," it doesn't say that, does it? It says, "You are God's masterpiece created in Christ Jesus to do good works, which God prepared in advance for you to do." When we get into the secret place, when we draw near to the Lord, He reveals that we're His masterpiece. He's prepared these things in advance for us to do. You know that word masterpiece is the Greek word poema, which means a beautiful poem or a tapestry. You are God's poem. You are God's workmanship in Christ Jesus. You know the word poetry or poem that we get? That's where the word poema comes from, P-O-I-E-M-A. It means something made, and in context, is something made by God himself. We are a new creation in Christ Jesus, artfully created. Have you ever thought of yourself as a supernatural work of divine poetry? Each of our lives is a canvas on which the master is painting a beautiful work of art in our lives. You are God's work of art. When we look at ourselves this way, when we begin to understand our incredible value in Christ, C.S. Lewis said, "You are a divine work of art." D. Robertson said this, "If Rembrandt's artistic masterpieces have great undisputed value, would not God's one-of-a-kind human masterpieces convey even greater value?" You're worth more than a Rembrandt. You're worth more than the greatest paintings the world has ever seen. I want to read a poem to you before we wrap up this session. This is from Myra Brooks Welch. You may have heard it before, it's one of my favourite poems called "The Touch of the Master's Hand." "Twas battered and scarred, and the auctioneer thought it scarcely worth his while to waste time on an old violin. But he held it up with a smile. 'What am I bidding, good folks?' he cried. 'Who'll start the bidding for me? A dollar, a dollar, then two, only two. Two dollars, who'll make it three? Three dollars once, three dollars twice, going for three, but no.' From the back of the room, far back, a grey-haired man came forward and picked up the bow. And then he wiped the dust off the old violin, he tightened the loose strings, and then he played a melody pure and sweet as a caroling angel would sing. The music ceased, and the auctioneer with a voice that was quiet and low said, 'What should I bid for the violin?' And he held it up with the bow. 'A thousand dollars, who'll make it two? Two thousand, who'll make it three? Three thousand, once, going twice, and gone for three thousand.' The people cheered, but some of them cried, 'We don't quite understand what changed its worth.' Swift came the reply, it was the touch of the master's hand. Many a man with life out of tune and battered and scarred with sin is auctioned cheap to a thoughtless crowd, much like the old violin. A mess of pottage, a glass of wine, a game, and he travels on. He is going once, going twice, and he's almost gone. But then the master comes. And the foolish crowd never can quite understand the worth of a soul and change that's wrought by the touch of the master's hand." Friends, I don't know about you, but sometimes you might feel like you're an old, dusty, out-of-tune violin that might be worth a dollar or two or three dollars at the most. That's a lie of the devil. All the negative lies, all the accusations, all the threats, all the stuff from the devil. God will try and make you think that's all you're worth. But when you have a touch of the master's hand on your life, He'll tighten your strings, He'll dust you off. He'll make a beautiful song out of your life because you are God's poem. You are God's masterpiece. When you worship the Lord with the Word of God and with worship, you'll rise up above those problems. God's put a song in every one of your life. You have a unique song. Glenn's song is different to my song. Every person's song is different. I shouldn't try and be Glenn. It's really hard to be Glenn. I've got to be the best me I can be, amen? I've got to be the song that God called me to sing. What's your song? What's your poem? What's your message to the world that God has created? If you don't know, it's found in the secret place, friends. Get into the Psalms, get into the Word, worship Him. Cast all your worries, all your anxieties. Don't let it weigh you down and cripple you and hold you back and render you ineffective. Lay it all at the feet of the master. Because when you get the touch of the master's hand, when the Holy Spirit comes inside of you, you receive power from on high to be witnesses and to sing that song that you're called to sing, amen? Let's pray. Father, I thank you for my brothers and sisters that are here tonight. And I thank you that each one that is here tonight, you created them as a masterpiece. You created them as a poem. You created them like that violin. Even though it may be a bit old and dusty, one touch from you can make it sing a beautiful song. Father, I pray that each one of us will find our song. Each one of us will find our destiny and our purpose in you. And Lord, help us get into the secret place, help us get into the Psalms. Help us write our own Psalms. Help us be true worshippers in spirit and in truth. Help us to have a heart after you, just like David, Lord God. Father, we just ask that we can come back to you as our first love. That we can lay everything at your feet, Lord Jesus, afresh tonight. Holy Spirit, just come and seal this word over us, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.